UBSutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com. Your favorite show is back. The Uba City Home, Garden, and Sportsman's Expo, March 24th through 26th at the UBSutter Fairgrounds. You'll find concrete floor coatings, indoor flooring, things to go on the floor, items softer than the floor, food, more than 100 exhibitors for home, garden, and sports, and tasty treats to eat or take with you. The Uba City Home, Garden, and Sportsman's Expo. Details at ychomshow.com.
Next up is public comment. Andy?
Public comment is an opportunity for members of the public to address the Board of Directors on any subject matter that is not on the meeting agenda and is within the board's subject matter jurisdiction. Public comment periods are limited to three minutes per person, and the total amount of time for public comment is 15 minutes. Persons participating by way of video conference or teleconference shall ensure their audio is muted at all times except when the board chair announces public comment periods. At those designated times, members of the public wishing to speak shall enable their audio and state their name for the record. When multiple members of the public wish to speak, the clerk will determine the order of speakers and announce their names accordingly. To ensure proper conduct, the board reserves the right to mute the audio and video of any members of the public violating generally accepted principles in decorum of official public meetings.
Great, thank you. Do we have any public comment? Okay. Seeing no public comment, we will move on to consent items. Are there any board comments or questions related to the consent agenda? Okay, any public comment on the consent agenda?
Who'd approve?
Have a first?
I'll second it.
And a second? Everyone in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we'll move on to discussion items, starting with item three. And I'm gonna go ahead and spare you all and not read that entire item. It's as listed on the agenda. And Teresa? Good morning.
Since not, I'll do a very brief report. So you have the written report. And so like I said, just briefly, the report went to the ADP Committee on March 7th. The committee recommended approval of four new position requests and three requests for reclassification of existing positions. Since that meeting, an additional request for a full-time utility worker was added to this report as an urgency item, a need for the position with approaching in the coming months, but became more of a priority since it's taxing our current resources. And then adding the position now would allow us to utilize the current candidate pool for an existing utility worker vacancy. And then just in closing, the overarching theme of these requests is to improve operational efficiency and then to continue transferring work from consultants to internal staff, which helps us build and retain knowledge over the long term. That's my report, and I'll take any questions.
Great. Thank you, Teresa. Any questions or comments from board members? Any public comment on this item? I don't see any, so entertain a motion, please.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great. Motion passes. Excellent. Thank you, Teresa. We'll move on to item four. Consider approving Energy Marketing Services Agreement between Shell North America and Uba Water Agency as presented at this meeting and authorize the general manager to finalize, approve, and sign the agreement. Morning, Willie.
Good morning. I'll try and keep the momentum going here. In 2016, the power purchase agreement with PG&E expired, and we elected to retain Shell Energy as our scheduling coordinator. Our original agreement lasted until 2018, so 2016 to the summer of 18, where we made a major modification due to change in market conditions. That modification was to the advantage of the agency. Since 2018, we've been operating under that agreement with Shell Energy, and recently there have been some changes in the market conditions as the energy market goes. And we sent in an RFP to different scheduling coordinators just to get kind of knowledge of the market. In December, we decided to either, one, renegotiate the deal with Shell or put out an RFQ, or actually, I might have got the reverse RFQ versus RFP. We had some successful negotiations with Shell. We're like 99% there with a revised agreement. All the terms of the agreement are to the agency's advantage. At this time, I would recommend that we approve authorizing me to finalize the agreement. The bottom line is, is this would effectively be a three-year agreement. It would, like I said, the terms are advantageous to the agency, but it would be two years operating under this agreement. And at the end of two years, we'd have a 365-day notice if we wanted to expire the agreement or get out of the agreement. So in my mind, it'll allow us to do a few things. It allows us to sell or market some of the products that we have on our own. Two of those are special source energy, which is the carbon-free product that we sell to CCAs, and the other one is renewable energy credits, which is a product that we obtained when we bought Narrows One from PG&E. So it's, you know, a small amount of revenue, but those are two products that we will have sole control of marketing ourselves. And then we'll also get the opportunity to sell some renewable or resource adequacy. And that's just so we can go out and learn what the market is for resource adequacy. So that's our intent over the next couple of years, is to start to trade some of these products ourselves and gain knowledge of the market.
Great, thank you. Any questions?
Yes, I would recommend to the board that these three of us learn about ISO and the agreement with Shell. I have no problem with voting for the motion to have our manager finalize the contract, but I think it's very important before we finalize the contract that we have a more, more people on the board have an understanding. This is our major source of revenue, and the amount we pay Shell is a major amount of money over the three years. And our general manager is already, the biggest item is the day ahead or next day, or same day sales. The contract is, decreases the percentage on that, but the overall total cost is a lot. So I would move that we authorize the manager to make it, but have him meet with at least three of us to, so we understand it as a board. I think it's a better move than trying to educate the whole board on the ins and outs of both Cal ISO and the contract.
Willie, is there a timeline when you would need to have the contract signed or like to have the contract signed?
I mean, I think I said the agency's advantage to sign it as soon as possible because then we benefit, we get the benefit of the new terms. We definitely needed to make a decision in the next month or so, because if we aren't going to execute the agreement with Shell, we need to know what we're doing, you know, come January 1st. Do we have time to have a meeting to educate board members? Absolutely. I'm happy to do that. The question I would have is, and this might be for Josh, is how do we structure this? Can I just educate some board members just in meetings, or do we need to create an ad hoc, or do we need to make a formal committee? So I, Josh, answer that.
Mr. Chairman, I would suggest it be an ad hoc committee.
And that would be my recommendation as well.
Okay. Do we have three members? I assume Director Matthews would want to be one of the three. Do we have two other board members who would be interested in serving in an ad hoc committee that would probably meet once?
I would.
Okay. Well, I
Wayne?
I, I'm gonna go ahead and do Director Matthews, Director Messick, and Director Bishop on the ad hoc committee.
Okay.
No problem. I'll work with those directors to get that meeting scheduled.
Okay, thank you.
The motion is back to considering an original motion without all the additional.
Correct the motion. Well, or I guess there hasn't been a motion yet, but
I'll correct the motion to do what we talked about doing. Authorize the manager to sign the contract and to have an ad hoc committee work with it.
All right, I'll second.
Okay, great. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. And I did forget to ask for public comment on this item, so I do apologize. I do not see any public comment on Zoom. Is there any public comment in the room? Seeing none. Great, thank you. I didn't, also didn't ask if any was opposed. Anyone opposed? Everyone said aye. Great. Okay, next, you will move on to item five, receive a state legislative update. Good morning, Adam.
Get the latest on the Puzzle Palace, huh?
Good morning, Chair Bradford and Directors, Adam Robyn, Government Relations Manager. The purpose of this update today is to provide you with a little bit of information about what's happening down in Sacramento and how the agency is engaging. In response, we endeavor to keep the board updated on everything that's happening down in Sacramento that might affect the agency. We do that through Willie's managers' reports, but periodically, it's helpful to just dedicate some time on your agenda so we can, you know, connect and kind of run through some of the relevant details. I will try to be brief, but as you'll see, there's a fair amount happening. Andy, I don't know if we can start the timer for me here, but I'll try to keep it to the 10 minutes we have on the agenda. The first item here, and I think the thing to keep in mind as staff always, is the fact that our strategic plan as an agency provides very clear direction to us as staff as to what our agency's priorities are. As you know, the legislative process has its twists, turns, tight timelines, so that comprehensive direction is invaluable to staff as we work to represent the agency down in Sacramento, in Washington DC, and in other venues. You know, there's some specific strategies that are outlined in the strategic plan as well. That's kind of what I put the Cliff Notes version of on the screen here. We actively monitor legislative and regulatory developments. We engage to promote and defend Uba Water's interests and strategic priorities. We do that through testimony. We do that through meetings. We do that through positioning on legislation. That's all part of sort of the active work that we do day-to-day in Sacramento. And then obviously, we're always looking to cultivate relationships, not only with elected officials and their staff, but with key stakeholders, others in Sacramento, to ensure that we're part of sort of the conversation in Sacramento and in Washington DC. So this is what I'm hoping to cover this morning, just a brief overview of what the next several slides hold. New legislators, policy bills, state budget dynamics, and what we see through the rest of the year here. I don't have a slide for that first bullet point, but I think it's just worth expounding on a little bit. Thirty-seven of the 120 state legislators in Sacramento are new. So almost a third of members down in Sacramento don't have experience in the roles that they now serve. That is a significant issue. You have, you know, the new 12-year term limit structure. Some of those folks will be around for, you know, as long as 12 years. I mean, it really affects the types of bills that we're seeing introduced. It affects the types of conversations you have around the bills that are being introduced, because, you know, while all of those folks have great experience in most cases that they're bringing to the building, they might not be familiar with a lot of the policy dynamics in Sacramento, and we'll get into that a little bit. Then I'll turn to policy bills. You know, these are the legislative measures that move through the regular process, the policy committees approved by both houses, and ultimately are considered by the governor, and broke out some of the various issue areas there. Then want to talk about the state budget and some resources and water bond proposals that we are currently seeing in Sacramento. And then finally, like I said, just talk a little bit about what might be coming next. This is my most dense slide for the day. This is what I think we'll probably spend most of our time talking about. I think it's safe to say that, I'll talk about the budget in a little more detail in just a moment here, but the last several years, I think the legislature's really been dealing with several issues. The first is the remote work environment that was created by COVID, where you had really limited interpersonal interaction, not only between folks on the outside seeking to engage with the legislature, but even between legislators themselves. I think that environment was really, created some big changes. You also had big budget surpluses. So a lot of the action in Sacramento was focused around the state budget for the past several years, and we didn't see much on the policy bill front. This year, as you might be able to see from the slide, we're seeing some significant policy measures that are being considered. Significantly, on water rights. Obviously, water rights are fundamental to an agency like Uba Water Agency. They're fundamental to how our infrastructure was constructed and is operated. They're fundamental to existing arrangements that we have, like the Uba Court and other really important relationships and arrangements that are already in place. So anything that has the potential to introduce uncertainty or risk into those, into that, again, fundamental foundation of how we operate, is very important. These four proposals that I listed here, AB 460, AB 676, AB 1337, and SB 389 are problematic. They're problematic for different reasons. Just to give you a little bit of the flavor here, AB 460 would authorize the State Water Resources Control Board to issue interim relief orders, basically snap relief orders on their own authority to enforce various provisions of state law, including a violation of a curtailment, but it's not limited to that. It also includes references to really kind of broad areas of state law, things like Fish and Game Code 5937, which says fish need to be left in good condition below dams, the beneficial use provision in the state constitution. All in all, it represents a pretty big expansion of the State Water Resources Control Board's authority, and it's got state waters, it's got water users around the state concerned. AB 676, the domestic use preference, since the early 20th century, there's existed a domestic use preference in California state law, which says that the highest use of water in the state is for domestic use, followed by irrigation. This bill would modify the domestic use preference language, call out specific types of uses that occur in the domestic context, as well as codify existing judicial decisions, state regulations, and provisions of the state constitution, while omitting other relevant case law and things like that. So all in all, folks are looking at this thing pretty weirdly. The author has gone through some twists and turns and explaining what the intent is, but it's problematic because of the uncertainty it introduces. AB 1337, State Water Board, Water Conservation Regulations and Implementing Orders. Those are significant change in state water law a few years ago, which says that in certain year types, the Water Board can issue emergency curtailment regulations. The past several years in the Bay Delta watershed, we've been operating under those emergency curtailment regulations. This bill would do a lot of things, but one of the most significant things it would do is authorize the Water Board to adopt curtailment regulations in all year types that would apply to all water rights and would represent a really significant change in California water rights law. And then finally, SB 389 by Allen, this deals with the investigation and determination of water rights. There is an interest in giving the State Water Board the authority and ability to investigate the basis of claims of water rights. What's concerning about this bill to many is the fact that it would essentially shift the burden onto an existing water rights holder to prove up their existing water rights in a way that really doesn't make a whole lot of sense, given the broad spectrum of water rights that you see around the state. So that's, that's the summary of each of these bills. In terms of the approach that we are adopting here, there is unified opposition from our water associations, like the Association of California Water Agencies, the California Municipal Utilities Association, Northern California Water Association, agricultural interests, business interests in California, to these bills. There's not really a sort of unique Uba Water angle that we're watching out here, but this is important. This is important to our existing arrangements, so we are engaging through our associations to oppose these bills, but also importantly, to explain there are ways that we can improve the existing water rights system. The legislature and the governor have approved $80 million in spending over the last two years to modernize the state's water database, water rights database, and improve the implementation of the existing priority system. Similarly, there are other things that can be due to, there are other steps that can be taken, like reactivating stream gauges that in some parts of the state have just basically gone defunct, or installing new stream gauges in areas that need it. Statewide, there are important steps that can be taken to reinforce and the existing water rights priority system, but these sorts of disruptive proposals are frankly not what we see as the path forward. And that's consistent with the strategic plans language about ensuring that we're protecting water rights. So that's the approach there. Promise I won't go into as much detail on these remaining proposals because they're a little more straightforward. On water management, AB 30 Ward is a reintroduction of a bill that Uba Water Agency sponsored last year, AB 2078. The, this is a bill that the Scripps Institution of Oceanography is supportive of. It basically makes some pretty modest changes to the Atmospheric River Program that exists within the Department of Water Resources, but it sort of updates it to reflect the current status of those efforts and the fact that they are gaining so much traction and support statewide. AB 754 is a bill that we have concerns with. It would essentially require a party that adopts an agricultural water management plan, which Uba Water Agency does, and which our member units do as well, most of our member units do as well, to, to require if they have a reservoir or a source of surface water that they identify as their, as a source of water, to develop and implement automatic conservation plans if reservoirs, reservoir levels reach a point to be defined. It's really a sort of simplistic measure that tries to put a one-size-fits-all approach on surface water storage measurement statewide. It doesn't work for a bunch of reasons, but it's something that we're hoping to engage in constructive conversations with the author's office about. We'll be meeting with them later this week. Last bill here is AB 345 by Lori Wilson, Assembly Member from Solano County. This is a bill that would authorize the Department of Water Resources to provide advanced payment for flood protection and multi-benefit projects. Currently, DWR is not authorized to provide advanced payment, even in projects where they will ultimately be contributing, which for some projects around the state is really a hiccup in terms of getting those projects initiated and moving. Giving DWR the authority to do that would be helpful, so we are supporting that measure. There are, of course, other bills out there. In total, we're tracking 50 bills right now actively and learning more about them, but these are the ones that really sort of rise to the top of the heap. But whether it's, you know, additional changes to the Brown Act, measures related to forest health and watershed resilience, we are tracking a number of other bills as well. I will now turn to the state budget and bond proposals. The big change relative, what I described a little bit earlier, is that we have those historic surpluses the last several years. Last year's state budget was a record $303 billion, and that was almost $80 billion more than the previous year's budget. There's a lot of federal funding that trickled down that explained some of that tremendous growth. We are now at a point where, you know, budgets, estimates for this year's budget deficit vary, but it's somewhere in the range of $30 to $40 billion. And we saw that shift reflected in the governor's January budget proposal. We saw a number of significant commitments that were made by the legislature and by the governor in the past year's budget for the out years. We saw some significant changes that were made in last year's budget pulled back in the governor's budget. That was especially true in the natural resources and the water space. And, but significantly, I want to just take a few seconds here to talk about the Dam Safety and Climate Resilience Local Assistance Program. The, I'm gonna stop on my end. I can just All right. Back to where we were. As you know, the board is, Uba Water Agency is pursuing design of the Arcs spillway. In conversations with the board, a major point of emphasis for us has been to, as staff, has been to pursue and identify and pursue any available sources of external funding to support the construction of the project, recognizing the broad interests locally, statewide, regionally, even federally, in a project of that type. For the last two-plus years, Uba Water Agency has been basically quarterbacking the statewide coalition of interests that have similar projects where state funding makes a lot of sense. Last year's budget deal included $100 million for the next two years, so '24 and '25, for, to support a state dam safety and climate resilience local assistance program. This year's governor budget preserved that commitment, which was an important development. Not only that, but they actually are proposing trailer bill language, which is language that the legislature uses to help guide the implementation of new budget items. That's based on language that our coalition developed. It places primary emphasis on public safety, which we think is a big change over other proposals that we've seen in the past. So we're encouraged to see that piece preserved in the governor's budget. We're meeting with legislators to ensure that they see the value in that. We have bipartisan, bicameral support for that. You have everybody from Mr. Gallagher, representing, you know, Uba County, all the way down to some of the most liberal progressive Democrats in the Bay Area, all on the same page, recognizing value in these types of investments. So we're very encouraged that that's moving forward. And that's particularly relevant because there's a very active conversation happening right now about potential resources bonds to be placed before the voters on the November 2024 ballot. I listed a number of them here, but I think the one that deserves Uba Water Agency's special attention is SB 638 by Senator Eggman, who's from the Stockton area, and Senator Nilo, who's a Republican, represents the Sacramento metropolitan region, but because of kind of the weirdness surrounding redistricting this year, is actually serving as Uba County's representative. This is a proposal that's sponsored by the California Central Valley Flood Control Association, and it represents the biggest proposed investment in the state plan of flood control and good local projects since 2006, when we saw the last set of bonds. It's a $6 million bond currently. It was amended last night to include $1 billion for the dam safety program. We're very encouraged to see that development because frankly, the $100 million that's proposed in the governor's budget gets spread pretty thin pretty quickly. But if you have an opportunity for a resources bond to reinvest in the benefits of the state plan of flood control, including dam safety projects, that's a potentially very powerful development. The other bond measures listed here are sort of more typical water resources bonds along the lines of Prop 1, Prop 68. AB 305 is a flood control measure, but it has yet to be substantively amended. So that's a brief description there. On SB 638, we do think support for that measure really has an opportunity, gives us an opportunity to highlight the fact that the state has an important role to play in bringing resources to the table to solve these issues. The $1 billion for dam safety is an important piece of that. Ultimately, however, you know, these, these measures are subject to a lot of negotiation and compromise within the building, and ultimately, of course, they have to be approved by California voters as well. So that's my last slide. You know, as we look forward, we definitely, you know, continue to monitor activities in Sacramento closely. There are some big policy bills before us in a way that we haven't seen recently. You know, I've been doing, I've been working in and around the state legislature for almost 15 years, and I have never seen kind of a full-spectrum push on water rights the way that we're seeing this year. I am heartened by the fact that, you know, the water community, business, agriculture, local communities, and others are standing up and, you know, describing the importance of those measures to the legislature, and we certainly intend to be actively involved in that conversation moving forward. So with that, welcome any direction, thoughts, or questions. Thanks.
Any questions from the board?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Adam. Next, we'll move on to item six, receive a high-level overview of the Agency Act and the Ralph M. Brown Act. Morning, Josh. Morning, Josh.
I'm Josh Horowitz from Barkwitz, Cronk and Shanahan. We've been the agency's attorneys, mainly general counsel, water resources for about 25 years. My personal involvement with the agency goes back to 2001 and the first PG&E bankruptcy. And I'm here today to talk to you about board governance generally, specifically the Brown Act, the board's rules for proceedings, a couple slides on conflict of interest spotting, and then an overview of the Agency Act. Happy to hold all questions to the end, but feel free, if anything comes up while I'm talking, to interrupt me. I'm happy to answer questions as we go along. So the main modules today are the Brown Act, which is the open meeting law. It applies to all local agencies, Yuba Water, as well as any other local public agency. One thing to note, there is a state open meeting law called the Bagley-Keane Act that applies to state agencies, so they have a slightly different setup than local agencies do. And as I said earlier, we'll be talking briefly about conflict of interest, and then various board governance, including agency act authority and limitations. So the first module concerns the Brown Act, and as I say on the slide, it's complicated. Slide kind of tells the story. When the Brown Act was first enacted in 1953, it was a page and a half and nine statutes. Today, it covers 29 pages in the government code and 60 sections. And even within that, it's even more complicated. For example, three statutes exist today that cover teleconference and remote meetings. The reason for that is we have the, what we call the traditional rules, and I'll talk about all these a little further in a moment. And then in the last few years, we've had AB 361, which came in during COVID and allowed fully remote meetings. And then at the beginning of this year, AB 2449 became effective, and that provides for individual directors to participate remotely in a limited and defined set of circumstances. So as those statutes sunset, we'll get back eventually to the traditional teleconference rules, and the other ones will go away. So why is the Brown Act important? It basically is, is here because the legislature has decided that all public business should be done in public in an open meeting. And as the slide says, compliance is important because it's the law number one, but more important, it's good policy. It allows the public to come in and listen to what you're doing to give you input and help you form your policy directions. There are consequences if you don't comply, and those are listed here. The big one, of course, is if you violate the Act, it can basically be front page in the Appeal Democrat or elsewhere, and that's something you want to avoid. So compliance is certainly something we want to make sure happens on a regular basis, and I think this board is very careful with that anyway. So here are just a few slides that talk about the basics of the Brown Act. The key thing to remember is open in public. That is the core of the Brown Act. Unless there's a provision in the law that says you can go into closed session for a particular reason, and those generally have to do with litigation or other advice from an attorney or another, for example, security officer or law enforcement officer, or for purposes of addressing particular employees, whether that's to hire, terminate, or talk about performance, whether it's an individual or a group of individuals, those are the basis for most closed sessions. Otherwise, all of your business has to be done in public. So the Brown Act applies to a legislative body, and what that means is the Board of Directors, of course, as well as all standing committees, and that includes any committee that's formed with continuing subject matter jurisdiction or that has a fixed meeting schedule. So even though ad hoc committees generally, as long as they're confined to a single subject and a short duration, they are not a legislative body, and they are not necessarily subject to a Brown Act meeting. But one thing to remember, if the ad hoc committee continues for a while, or you actually notice those meetings and have a standing schedule for them, they do become a Brown Act body. So what is a meeting? And it's probably pretty intuitive. When you have a quorum of the board that gathers, for example, in the boardroom or in a committee room, that creates a meeting. But it's more than that, because you can have, you don't have to have a physical presence to have a meeting. For example, anything that where four or more board members actually get together through a telephone call, an email exchange, and today even on social media, and you discuss agency business, and you do that for the purpose of deliberating or trying to come to some sort of consensus, that becomes a meeting as well. So that's what we call a serial meeting, and those are to be avoided, obviously, as we'll discuss further in a moment. So the agency is seven members, and a quorum therefore is four members, but we have this somewhat odd structure. Most special act agencies either have a directly elected five-member board, or they have what is called the dependent board, and that means the Board of Supervisors or some other body is appointed and sits as the board. The agency is somewhat unique in that you have two elected directors that are directly elected by the voters of Yuba County, as well as the five Board of Supervisors. So one thing to keep in mind when two, more than two supervisors actually are meeting to talk about agency business, be very careful about not crossing the line, because if you're talking about county business or the two cross over, that could create a Brown Act, prohibited Brown Act meeting. So want to talk a little bit more about a serial meeting. You know, again, a serial meeting is a meeting that takes place without a physical grouping of directors, and that can be by phone, email, social media, or any other form of communication. And it doesn't have to be even four or more directors talking directly to each other. That can be through some sort of intermediary. And the classic forms of a serial meeting are the daisy chain or the hub and spoke. And a daisy chain is where Director A talks to Director B about an agency issue. Director B turns around and says, hey, I've talked to Director A, and hey, Director C, what do you think, and so on. And hit that magic number four, you have a prohibited daisy chain serial meeting. The hub and spoke is where one person acts as the center and broadcasts out the board's thoughts or some movement towards what we call the collective concurrence, which is moving towards some kind of decision outside of a notice public meeting. So for example, if Mr. Whittlesey were to talk to more than four board members and say, hey, you know, this is what everybody's thinking, and what do you think we should do here, that would be a prohibited hub and spoke type meeting. And just additionally, a little bit more about use of email and social media as a meeting. The big thing here is it's okay to have one-way emails. So for example, Mr. Whittlesey or myself send the board an email to brief you on a particular subject, as long as it's a one-way communication and we're not asking you for any kind of decision. That's perfectly okay, just like it would be if you're being briefed in person. But one thing to always remember is if you want to ask a question, you should do it offline or just individually to the person who communicated with you, and avoid clicking reply all. That's where the trouble starts. And then just briefly, social media is obviously a thing today, and in 2020, the legislature actually passed a statute and put in the Brown Act that actually deals with social media use. And it made it clear that directors can use social media as part of your communications with your constituents and to get the word out about the agency. But when you do that, that should be for the purpose of talking directly to your constituents. And the other thing to remember there is other directors can be involved, but you can only read and review, and you should avoid actually responding directly to the other director's social media post. So a, a new issue that's cropped up with COVID, and when I say new, are remote meetings. There has always been the opportunity for board members to meet under the, what we call the traditional Brown Act teleconferencing rules. Those rules have been in the Brown Act for a couple decades at this point, and under those rules, that's where a director has to be away on personal business, a vacation, whatever, but they want to participate as long as you put the location on the agenda, that location is available to the public, you post the agenda there, and you have a means to allow the public to hear and be heard from that location, as well as the director that's participating. You can use those rules, and those rules will remain, they're a permanent fixture of the Brown Act. Now, since COVID, first AB 361 was passed. With that, you actually have to have a state or local emergency that's proclaimed by the governor. So right now, for example, the governor's put 40 counties under a local emergency, and as long as he proclaims that, that can be used as an AB 361 vehicle if you need to or want to have a remote meeting under that. And as you recall, under those rules, you actually don't need to agendize all the different locations. You just need to make sure that all the directors can participate and have two-way communication as well as the public. You know, the agency basically is set up for that because you hold all of your meetings as hybrid meetings, so it'd be easy to go to that if you needed to or wanted to, as long, again, as there's a proclaimed local or statewide emergency that the governor has issued. Now, as of the first of this year, we have AB 2449. Frankly, it's not terribly useful, but it does allow an individual director, if they meet very specific requirements, and we call those emergency circumstances or just cause, you can participate remotely. I mean, the one thing about these rules are they really center around a family need or a personal health need. So for example, you know, if you get sick and you don't want to be in the boardroom, this does allow you with advance notice to the board and action by the board to allow you to participate. Goes either on the agenda at the time it's posted or is voted on later, before, or at the meeting, then you can use these rules. And there's more to that in terms of what constitutes an emergency. But basically, that's where you have a personal or a family health emergency. Just causes a little broader, that allows you for other kinds of family caretaking to participate. And we actually have a primer on that, if you want to see that. Director Blazer. On the AB 2449 rules? Yes. I mean, but again, if it doesn't make it on the agenda, it's just something that has to be announced at the time it's added to the agenda. So it'll just depend on the timing. It can, again, it can, you know, if you know far enough in advance, it should be put on the agenda. But what 2449 does allow is, say you wake up, you woke up this morning and you tested positive for COVID, and you wanted to participate in the meeting, you could still call Mr. Whittlesey, Chair Bradford, and say, hey, I can't make the meeting in person because I'm sick, but I'd like to participate, and as long as that's known at the beginning of the meeting, and the board can take action to add that to the agenda. Yes, right. And as long as it's added, and fully participate, be part of the meeting. And again, you know, the, the rules are pretty specific for each type of meeting. We've got a primer on that, which I'm happy to provide to the board if you'd like to see that, or I can just provide it to staff so they have that available. Yeah, I mean, that would be sufficient, but again, at that point, the board would actually have to vote to put on the agenda through section 54952. You have to find that there's an imminent need to add that to the agenda, take that vote, add the item to the agenda, and then you have to take a second vote to actually put that agenda item on and...
So maybe I'm a little confused, but a question slash clarification. It was my impression that in the emergency situation, that's what needed to happen, the board needed to vote on that, but in order to adjust cause, the board did not need to vote on allowing that person to participate. Is that a misunderstanding of how that works?
Actually, that's, that's actually correct.
Okay.
Yeah, but, you know, if you're going to do that, the one thing you need to have, and that you do have, is you need to maintain the remote meeting capability.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and you know, if, if you don't have that ability and you want to set it up, then you'd have to either proceed under emergency or go through the same steps. Oh, I see.
Okay.
So just briefly, to summarize what doesn't count as a meeting, as long as less than a quorum of directors meet to talk about something, or you meet with the, with staff to be briefed, for example, those do not count as public meetings. The other thing that Brown Act meetings don't cover are attendance, for example, at a public conference like the Aqua CSDA Conference. You can attend another local agency board meeting or some kind of community event. The only caveat here is you can't talk about agency business and do anything that would create some sort of serial meeting. It's always best in those... It's always best in those kinds of situations to avoid having a quorum sitting together for no other reason than appearances sake. But obviously, there's always that temptation to talk about business, so it's best to avoid being together, it's more than three directors. So, one important issue is closed session confidentiality. Until 2003, this was actually something that was dealt with by the courts and common law. And there were a number of decisions over the years that were litigated and reduced to an appellate decision. In 2003, and this is one of the newer Brown Act statutes, they, Section 54963 was added, and this actually set forth the rules for closed session confidentiality. The general rule, of course, is as a director, you're not supposed to disclose any discussion or decision that's made in closed session to anyone outside of the board and the staff that were involved in that closed session. But that said, the statute does provide for certain exceptions, and those have to do essentially with two situations. One, as part of the closed session, there's always going to be a certain amount of information that isn't confidential or becomes non-confidential at a later time. For example, you take a vote on hiring somebody. At some point, you have to approve the contract in open session. At that point, that's not confidential information and can certainly be talked about. The other kind of disclosure has to do with a situation where a director feels like the closed session was improperly agendized, or you went off-topic and were talking about things that weren't agendized, and you A either want to make a complaint to the DA or agency counsel as basically a Brown Act violation, or you want at the dais without disclosing what was actually discussed, saying, you know, "I believe that the closed session we just came out of wasn't properly taken care of and agendized, and I'm going to be pursuing this further." So, those kinds of disclosures are allowed. And this slide just basically outlines what happens if there is a closed session violation. Obviously, if an employee does that, you would use the ordinary disciplinary process in your employee regulations. With directors, directors have an interest in their office and they have due process rights. So, it would be important to first try to counsel the offender and put a stop to that. But in egregious cases, and I'm sure that would never arise here, the board does potentially have the opportunity to censure or reprimand that director if they have a pattern in practice of violations. There's also the opportunity to take legal action. You can report to the DA or the grand jury and ask them to take action or seek a court injunction to stop continuing violations. And just generally speaking, you know, the public has rights under the Brown Act as well to object to and deal with violations. It's important to note that a violation where the certain directors or the board violate the act on purpose, that can be considered a misdemeanor and does have fines and potential jail time attached to that. I'm sure that would never happen here, but just to be aware, intent does matter in Brown Act violations. You can go to court and get a injunction to stop Brown Act violations if there's continuing violations. There's also a process that the public has to go through first before they can seek that kind of injunction for continuing violations. If it's a one-time violation, any interested member of the public or the DA can actually pursue those kinds of violations through giving a notice within the 90 days that that violation allegedly occurred. At that point, the agency has 30 days to actually correct, what we call cure and correct that violation. And what that would entail generally is you would have to go back, re-agendize that item, take a vote again, go make sure it's properly agendized, go through the actions to ratify that previous action or decision. And in cases where Brown Act does get litigated, the challenger can get attorney's fees. So, it's important, obviously, to avoid these kinds of violations, or if they occur and you get the cure and correct notice that you endeavored to cure and correct within the 30 days. And then, just, there's, the League of California Cities publishes a guide to the Brown Act called "Open in Public," and it's available from this link, and it's, you can download a copy for yourself free if you'd like to do that. And I'm going to turn next to governance issues and talk a little bit about board conduct and conflict of interest, and then we'll get into the Agency Act. But I thought this quote from Mr. Clay is very relevant and kind of lays out what the board's tasked with doing. You're here as the elected officials to represent the people and to carry out their trust and to take actions that were their benefit and not for any other purpose.
Can I ask a question there on the Brown Act? So, this might be a fine line, but I've understood in the past that a board member could do something similar to what staff could do as far as perhaps email out information or even make phone calls, as long as you're not debating an issue or you're not asking the other member what their position is on an issue. Is that accurate or...
You know, one-way communications are always permitted. The risk if a board member does it, it just might encourage other board members to want to join the conversation, if you will. So, you know, best practice is to avoid doing that. It's better, for example, to talk to the general manager or legal counsel and say, "Hey, you know, I have this issue. I'd like to get that in front of the other board members and brief them on it." And, you know, ultimately, what should happen is that's all moving toward putting it on the agenda for a public meeting for further discussion and action. So, you know, theoretically, yes, Director Bishop, but in practice, that's better to be avoided if you can, or, you know, confine that communication to three, two other board members or less. And then, again, that should ultimately come to staff to be agendized for a full discussion in a public meeting. So, you know, just to kind of talk about the board's role in the agency, you obviously sit atop the agency. You are the captain of the ship, so to speak. And what your job is, is to set policy, look after the agency's financial health, prove budgets, deal with those kinds of things. You're the standard bearers for the agency's mission. You're out there in the community, providing leadership. You want to make sure that the agency is doing right, so you're concerned with legal compliance and accountability. You have certain employees that actually are your employees and report to you. Those are the GM, the secretary, legal counsel, and the auditor. So, your job is to employ, hire, fire those people and provide them direction. And of course, with the GM, that's your key employee. You want to maintain close contact, assess that person's performance, support that person in their role when they're out in the community, carrying out the agency's message and mission.
Before you go on, the secretary, who's our secretary? Would that be Jerry?
It's the clerk of the board, Director Matthews. Yeah, I mean, that person has the secretarial duties. Right, I use shorthand, but that, I use shorthand. That's the clerk of the board. So, this slide just summarizes...
I'm sorry. Our auditor is Richardson. It's an outside agency, and that's why the auditor comes and does a report to you every year, because they're reporting to you on their findings.
So, the slide summarizes board conduct standards. And I'm sure this is intuitive for all of you as elected officials, but, you know, your main mission, of course, is to look after the agency and carry its message out to the public. That includes when you're in the boardroom in a public meeting, dealing with the public fairly, providing them information, and having a dialogue to the extent that's appropriate. You're here for the agency, and you're looking after the agency's interests as a whole. You're not supposed to be looking at a particular constituency or your personal interests. You're focused on the agency's mission. Collaborative work is important. You should be working collaboratively among yourselves and with the staff and other public officials and the public to ensure that the agency's mission is going in the direction you want it to, and you're communicating your message so people understand what you're doing. And it's important, of course, once a decision's made by the board, that the board as a whole support that decision in public. You always have the right to come back and talk about whether the direction that the agency is going is the right one, but once those decisions are made, you have an obligation to support that direction. And by doing those, by upholding these standards, what you do is basically build confidence and trust with the public in your mission and your direction. And of course, when the time comes when you have a hard decision to make, you have the trust and support of the public, so it's more likely you're going to be able to get that decision approved by the majority of the public. So, now I'm going to turn to the Rules for Proceedings briefly. Under the Rules for Proceedings, this is basically a policy document, but it's kind of a hybrid. What it does is, these are your rules, but they're framed by the Brown Act. It's how you implement the Brown Act, as well as address issues that aren't directly in the Brown Act. For example, the process by which you vote for board officers, how you, you know, when and where you hold your public meetings, what your agenda looks like. The board rules are designed to address those issues and kind of give you a comprehensive set of rules for operating. And the rules are on the agency's website, and here's the link if you want to review those. And then, bottom of this slide, and next slide, just kind of touch some of the highlights. The one thing I'd note in particular, the agency does not use Roberts Rules of Order. You use what are called the Rosenberg Rules, which are much simpler and easier to use than the Roberts Rules. So, there's a modified version of Rosenberg that's built into your rules.
I had a question about one of the highlight items on the previous slide, the item related to board action requires four affirmative votes. Curious if that's not just majority. So, for example, let's say there were only four board members present, would the decision have to be unanimous?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. As long as there's a quorum, these rules apply. If there's less than a quorum, then you're going to have to have...
Right, then you couldn't take any action.
The majority is always based on the full seven-member board, so you always have to have at least four votes.
Great, thank you.
If you have five members present, it could be four-one, and that would still pass. So, a couple slides on conflict of interest laws, another area that's very complicated. There's two principal laws. One is the Political Reform Act, which is in the government code, and this is the act that authorizes the Fair Political Practices Commission, and that's the agency that oversees the compliance with the Political Reform Act. That's the act that dictates that you file your Form 700s every year. And there's also a whole set of rules and FPPC regulations that implement those rules that deal with conflicts of interest. Those conflicts basically have to do with director, personal, financial interests. And, you know, one thing to understand about conflict of interest generally, this is not a collective thing, this is not a board thing. Each individual director has an obligation under the conflict of interest laws to comply with them. They see a potential conflict, they should call it out as early as possible and just bring that to the attention of the board chair, the general manager, or legal counsel, so it can be dealt with at the earliest possible time. If there is a conflict under the Political Reform Act, you're required to recuse yourself, make an announcement during a board meeting, and give a general idea of what the conflict is, and then leave the room and not participate during the item in which you may have a conflict. There's one exception. You are still allowed as a member of the public to come back into the room during public comment, if you want to make a comment as an individual member of the public in that case, but otherwise, you have to be legally divorced from having any participation in the particular item in which you have a conflict. The other form of conflicts are under Government Code 1090. This basically prohibits any director from having a financial interest in an agency contract. This one's a little more Armageddon-ish. Under the Political Reform Act, basically, you're going to get, if something goes wrong, the worst that's going to happen is you're probably going to get fined by the FPPC and have to write a check. But under Government Code 1090, if you're involved in making a contract with the agency, two things happen. One, the contract's absolutely void, so the contract goes away. And more important for the individual directors, you can be subject to significant criminal and civil penalties. So, that one's to be avoided. And generally speaking, you know, the, these rules are not...
Could I ask you to interject a little bit? We all get a salary. We have an automatic salary initiative. We voted on that salary initiative. And what you're saying, since we got a salary, we shouldn't have voted on it. So, could you explain the exceptions? I think one of the other exceptions I'd like you to be able to explain is if you're on a water district board and you're setting rates for the water district. Is there some type of an exception that if you're setting a rate for all, you're not conflicted? If you could comment?
Sure, you know, generally speaking, the conflict of interest laws do not... Sure, you know, generally speaking, the conflict of interest laws do not cover board decisions about your compensation and your operations, your expense reimbursements. Those are actually under a set of statutes in the government code. You're permitted by law to be able to do those things. You have to have a policy and you have to do that, obviously, in an open public meeting. And depending on how you fix your stipends, that either needs to be done by an ordinance or a resolution. And the public actually, in that case, can referend that decision, so that's the remedy for that. In terms of water rates or actions like that, it's more, Director Matthews, a question of it depends. There is what's called the public generally exception in the Political Reform Act, which basically says if a director's interests are pretty much the same as everyone else affected by that decision, then you can participate in that decision and you're not conflicted. But you know, again, the rules are really complicated when it comes to Political Reform Act conflicts in particular. And the FPPC rules set out tests for how you look at each type of financial interest. It's very fact heavy, the director's particular situation and what those facts are. So it's possible that you may be conflicted out of that kind of decision or not. It's something that has to be looked at on a case by case basis.
And the director's obligation is to state it. And if he thinks he falls within the guidelines of the same for all, then he can participate. Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Well, you know, what should happen is you see the potential conflict, you report that to the chair, Mr. Woodlesey or legal counsel. At that point, you go through the process of evaluating that potential conflict and decide, based on the facts, whether the public generally exception, for example, applies or, you know, there is an actual conflict there because of the nature of that particular rate and how it's being set. But you know, the likelihood is if it's a general rate that's spread across all, it's going to fall within the public generally exception, but that's something that should be analyzed before you participate, just to make sure that, you know, you're not on the outs with the Political Reform Act.
Thank you.
And this slide just goes over some of the potential financial interests that can raise a conflict issue. And, you know, again, these are very complicated, for example, under the real property interests. It literally has to do with how close you are, what the value of the property is. There's this whole rule about, you know, if if it can affect your property interest either for the good or adversely, even if it's two cents, that can create the conflict. So again, when you see a potential for any one of these types of conflicts, it's always best to bring it to management or the chair's attention and have legal counsel look and go through the analysis to make sure there aren't any issues. And finally, just a brief overview of the Yuba County Water Agency Act. And I know this always comes up and puzzles folks a little bit, but, you know, legally, the the agency is the Yuba County Water Agency, that's the name in the act. Even though you've branded as Yuba Water Agency, that's great for purposes of talking about the agency generally with the public legislators, other public officials, but for purposes of writing contracts, doing anything that has a legal implication, we have to use Yuba County Water Agency. And as I'm sure many of you know, the agency was formed in 1959. And the important thing to keep in mind here is you're a special aid, special act agency formed by the California Legislature. You have a defined set of powers and authorities that are granted by the by the act. Within that, you can only exercise those express powers and what are called implied powers, which means any powers that you that are necessary to actually carry out your expressly granted powers. Excuse me, so this is a list of of your authorized powers. I'm sure most of these are pretty familiar to you. You've got very broad authority when it comes to things like flood control, water supply, hydroelectric generation, power generation. But your powers in some other areas are much more limited. For example, under recreation, you can only exercise that power to the extent that you want to provide recreation at one of your facilities. So you can't go out and buy a piece of property to have an amusement park or provide something like that. It actually has to be connected to New Bullards Bar, obviously, where you have a large recreational facility, Lake Francis, that sort of thing. Water quality is an interesting one. Your only water quality authority expressly is the ability to file legal actions to protect water quality in the watershed. You know, that does kind of overlap a little bit with your power to deal with flood control and water storage, which does allow you to do certain things within storm drainage and dealing with wastewater. But those authorities also come in through your investment and granting authorities. And then groundwater regulation. Prior to Sigma, you were using AB 3030 to manage groundwater and obviously now under Sigma, that's your authority for that purpose. This slide talks about some of the types of authorized actions you can take. I'm sure most of these are familiar with you, so I won't go through these. And then unauthorized actions are things where there is no nexus with the agency's powers. So as nice as it would be to help improve roads or donate to a nonprofit, unless it has a clear connection to an agency purpose, you can't do that. And finally, the the risk of an unauthorized expense is that it is a gift to public funds, which is prohibited under the California Constitution. And two things can happen if you're in that situation. Actual expenditure would be void. If there's a contract involved, that would be void as well. And then if there was a lack of due care and actually authorizing that expenditure, directors can be personally liable to repay that. And with that, happy to answer any further questions.
Additional questions from board members?
Yeah, I do. So just for me, what is the, what's the status of the act now? This was created back in 1959. And there are certain references in here that the certain things, there's not to exceed 50 years. For example, I can read it here. This is under hydroelectric power development sale. Enter into contracts for the sale thereof for a term not to exceed 50 years. I just see that used in here two or three times, term not to exceed 50 years. Does that mean we've had extensions on these things or?
That just governs the term of the contract that you can enter into. So you can only enter into a contract with another agency. And, you know, the classic example is the 1966 our purchase agreement with PG&E that had a 50-year term because of that statute.
Okay, so that's what it's referring to.
Right, right. So, you know, that doesn't mean you couldn't enter into a successor contract after the end of that 50-year term. And it, you know, it doesn't sunset the statute that says that, it just simply says, if you're going to enter into it.
Now that are 50 years.
So the original, Josh said, the original agreement with PG&E was 50-year agreement. The agency's agreement with PG&E was not an original type of a thought. There were other entities in California that had similar 50-year agreements with PG&E. And I think it was, I don't know this for a fact, but I think it was well known that there was a high likelihood that Yuba Water Agency would enter into a 50-year agreement with PG&E. So I think it was drafted that way. I think that there was also a limit on how long you would take to repay bonds. You don't want like a forever indebtedness, so you wanted a realistic deal, basically a realistic financial deal that could actually be repaid. I think that's what was contemplated in all the readings that I've done. And so there had to be a limit on how long you could, you know, contract for. So to answer your specific question, we are in no agreement that's even near 50 years. All our 50-year stuff expired in 2016.
Yeah, and like Mr. Little C said, that's essentially the case. Yuba wasn't the only special act agency that was formed in 1959 and that had a long-term PPPA with PG&E. And the folks who wrote the agency act actually are, go way back as part of our lineage of our law firm. And that was intentional in order to put limits on PG&E's ability to have a longer term. You know, they they probably wanted 75 or 100 years. And that allowed the agencies, all of these agencies to be able to say, this is our limit.
So that just governs what, any new contracts or anything that we think about that's 50 years?
Can't have a shell PPA for 55 years. Not that you'd want one, but.
Yeah.
Any additional questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Okay, next we'll move on to managers' report, Willie.
Okay, I'll go through this quickly. There's two items that I kind of added to my managers' report today as part of this meeting. The first one is the ad hoc creative for the Shell. And so I think we can get that scheduled and complete this week. So I just want, you know, the expectation, it won't be months, it will be rather quickly. So thanks for setting that up. Secondly, we've been doing hybrid meetings for three years now. March 13th of 2020 was the beginning of COVID. And I think hybrid meetings are great. I think that this board wants to continue with hybrid meetings, so there's flexibility for the board and for the public. However, we've been now hacked four times, today's the fourth time. And every time that we're hacked, we put in new measures to try and mitigate that. But at this point in time, I think we need to take it a step further. And so what I plan to do is assign the management of our hybrid meetings to our information security department and basically review all of it and what platform we're using, how we're allowing the public to participate and, you know, how we're ensuring that we're basically filtering participants. So I know there's various ways to do it. I participate in public board meetings with the State Water Resources Control Board, and it's a different setup. I don't know that we need to go that detailed, but we'll work with the information security team, our existing, you know, admin folks that work on our meetings and agenda setups, and also with Josh to make sure everything we set up in the future is allows, you know, proper public participation. But at the same time, filters participants so we can minimize this distraction. It's disruptive and inappropriate and it just, you know, brings the agency down a step, which we want to avoid. So I'll let you know that we'll do something different. It may not be at the next meeting, but in in the near future, there'll be a change to how we do this or additional mitigation in place. Okay, with that, I'm not going to go into a lot of detail about New Bullards Bar. There's a lot of water in the lake and there's a lot of snow above the lake. This is similar to 2019, 2017, 2011, where we will have a full reservoir. Our reservoir won't even be full, completely full and peaked until late June, likely early July. We'll be spilling for a significant time and there's plenty of water in the Sierras. During the last storm where we had some significant flow in the Lower Yuba, I had some daily updates to you all about what's going on and what our spill flows were. The currently 5,000, actually, it's just started being decreased from 5,000 down to 1,000 at 10 a.m. today. So that's our plan to, and they'll go up and down over the next several months basic, based on, you know, temperatures in the mountains and, you know, freeze thaw and stuff like that and storms that come in. But we did have that minor little hiccup with the PG&E transmission line between Colgate and Rio Oso, which caused us to, to one, lose a little bit of generation revenue opportunity there. When you're spilling water and your generators aren't available, the water that you or the generation you weren't able to create is lost because you have the water available and you otherwise are going to have to spill it anyway. So that's unfortunate. However, it's not uncommon during significant storms like that to lose transmission capabilities. And PG&E did a great job, they got that line back up the next day. That's a very, very robust line. I have never seen either one of our two transmission lines, the Rio Oso or the Table Mountain Line, go down for any more than a few minutes since I've been here in six and a half years. But that was a significant wind event that we experienced, I think it was last Tuesday when that line went down. So not only do we lose little generation revenue, we also lost flood control capability. Now, it's a minor amount, but when we talk about our spillway is our primary flood control facility, but and also the arc spillway, which would give us, you know, if we do build it, would give us additional flexibility. The generators are a flood control facility as well. They're only up to about 3,300 CFS. But if you look at the graph of either the elevation of the reservoir during the period of time we were managing it for flood control last week or the Lower Yuba River downstream, you can see the impact of not being able to move that 3,300 cubic feet per second. Now, it didn't cause any problem here because we had a ton of room to move, one in the reservoir with operating space and two in channel capacity. And it probably wouldn't have a big impact if it was a major flood event. However, it's a mini example of how we operate for flood and it caused us to put a little bit more water in the flood space. And that was in an unwanted situation, but it also shows that you could do that in a desired scenario as well. So I just want to let you know that those two things happen, lost generation opportunity and a little bit of an impact from in the flood management. Okay, I'm just going to skip straight to, well, there is a lot in in your hard copy report, there's a lot of stuff about snowpack and reservoir conditions in the state and the forecast. I would just suggest that you just glance through that. The conditions are really good. I mean, we've been in several years of drought now, but we have obviously got significant snowpack and significant runoff and the reservoirs are all looking good. So that's, that's great news. I'll just kind of tidy up the end here with the communications and community relations portion. And as I always do, I kind of just read this because I don't know it off the top of my head. So we did a tour and interview with an editor and a couple photographers with the New York Times Magazine last week. They're doing a story about the complications of managing flood risk in a year like this. And that story is expected to be published in about three to four weeks. And we got quite a bit of coverage when we started making spillway releases from Bullards on KCRA, ABC 10, KFPK Radio and Yubanet. And they all offered advance notice and KCRA sent a crew up to get images of the gate spilling with Fox 40 and ABC 10 using our footage. And Alex's beautiful shot of the spillway flows was also featured on the homepage of Yubanet. And just yesterday, Fox 40 interviewed John James for a follow-up story to provide some context about why water managers have to release water now, even though storms have mellowed a bit. I'll just say, I got to tell you this, I'm sorry to take a lot of time, but I landed in my lazy boy at about 6 o'clock last night after work and I just turned on the TV, it happened to be on Fox 40. And then within two minutes, there was a shot of Bullards and I saw, oh, great, they're using our footage. And then 30 seconds later, John James was on the screen. I didn't even know the interview took place, so it was awesome to see him with a big smile on his face and he made the agency look good. So thanks to Didi and John or whoever set that up. Other coverage includes our flood management plan, making Yubanet and the Appeal Democrat. And I participated in a press conference via Zoom with DWR and Bureau of Reclamation officials on the ninth. And this was covered by many outlets, including the Sacramento Bee and Courthouse News Service and secured some great weather coverage that called out our coordinated release efforts with DWR and others. In addition, we did an interview with ABC 10 about the long-term benefits of the amount of water we've gotten this year with regards to hydro and recreation. We also responded to a query from Law 360, a legal media blog that was following up on the lawsuits related to our water quality certification. And our upcoming community relations events we're sponsoring include the Kokony Power Fishing Tournament at Bullards on April 1st, the Shady Creek Outdoor Schools. the Shady Creek Outdoor Schools Lip Sync Battle on April 8th, where we will also have a team of eight competing to maintain our stellar record and bring another trophy home and raise a lot of money for outdoor education. Our next meetings are April 4th. We have a regular board of directors meeting and an ABP committee meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from board members? Okay, we'll move on to board reports. Director Bishop?
The only thing I have to talk about is I went on a three-day tour of the Lower Colorado River project and it was just incredibly informative and well-done and puts our problems in perspective, you know, the problems they have down there. You know, dealing with seven states and a foreign country and 30 tribes, I think, that all use that water. And, and so to try to make everyone happy is impossible. And, and then when the river is over-allocated as it is and, you know, there's just not enough water for what everybody wants. So, it was really great to hear from, you know, we just got to hear from all the people who are actually dealing with those issues day-to-day, not just have to read it through the media and get whatever the media reports on it. So, just a great tour and hopefully I've brought something, some knowledge back that'll help me on this board.
Thank you. Director Matthews?
I would like to compliment our general manager on the Shell contract negotiations that I think he's done an excellent job, or his staff also. Anyway, just like to thank everyone.
Director Messing?
Just continue to work with North Yuba, the new North Yuba Irrigation Board and General Manager Leona and trying to get things done up there. Unfortunately, they've been snowed out of their scheduled work. So, kind of looking forward to the snow melt and them getting back to work.
Thank you. Director Fuhr? Director Blazer?
Yeah, I did notice one of the charts in your report showed the, the top 10 snowiest season. What is the snowiest? Snowiest, right? And I guess this year is about the second snowiest season. But I did happen to be, by coincidence, I just saw some recent photos of the same building in this year compared to 1953, 52, 53. And that was a lot of snow then. And thanks, Willie, for tracking down this hacking problem.
Thank you. Director Vasquez?
Okay, talked to Linda Water yesterday and we're going to work on projects that they think are approaching critical stage for water and sewer. I know we're doing weedland, but we're the fastest-growing district in Yuba. And we'll bring that back to the board later. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have anything today. We do have a closed session. Up next, we will take a quick, 10-minute, hopefully less, break and then we'll meet in closed session, as listed on the agenda.
Yubasutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumislakeselfstorage.com. Your favorite show is back, the Yuba City Home, Garden, and Sportsman's Expo, March 24th through 26th at the Yubasutter Fairgrounds. You'll find concrete floor coatings, indoor flooring, things to go on the floor, items softer than the floor, food, more than 100 exhibitors for home, garden, and sports, and tasty treats to eat or take with you. The Yuba City Home, Garden, and Sportsman's Expo, details at ychomshow.com. Skip's Marysville Music Cafe with lessons in-person and personalized, instruments including guitars and amps, horns, strings. Strings for instruments, and a myriad of music and sound equipment. Skip's Marysville Music Cafe.